Congratulations, Jim Ann. And thank you for all you've done. Thank you for keeping me on track. And I know those potholes need to be fixed. We're still working on it. Okay, but uh...
I don't have much longer to do that, do I?
Oh, you don't? You don't?
But don't worry, I'll find you.
You got my cell phone number, yeah.
I'll find you.
You want to say a few words?
Well...
Have you ever been lost for words before? So come on.
I am. I'm not a public speaker, and I'm overwhelmed at this. And I just want to say I appreciate everything. I appreciate all of y'all. And as far as our community, that's all city employees, volunteers, and everyone else, residents, work together to keep our city beautiful and make it a better Morgan's Point Resort. Thank you.
Actually, I was gonna give her double.
Well, yeah. Let me get to the end.
Got a spot for you. Wait, 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 wait. All right.
Thank you, Jim Ann, and all the rest of you volunteers that are out there that didn't get mentioned that time. We do appreciate all of you. We do have a few things on our workshop agenda, so we're gonna get started because we do have a pretty full schedule. But we're gonna start off right off the top with EDC. I think Linda, you're here somewhere. There you are. I think you have a few comments you wanted to make? That was my understanding, anyway.
So, April 2nd, we got together, and I presented my request for Morgan's Point to push entrepreneurism in Morgan's Point. And I presented it as a ladder, basically setting up infrastructure, going to home-based business idea, pop-up vendors, tiny business village, and then also checking into changing some of our zoning to multi-use instead of just commercial. That also helps with entrepreneurism. So you're paying one rent instead of two for your house, an idea. So, anyway, that's where I hope you will support us. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, next one is DS 25023, discuss public hearing. BH 25003 ordinance, OR 25003, specific use permit. And who's gonna do that one again? Kim?
Ken, you got it?
He's doing two of these right here. This one...
I've got another one down a little bit.
Okay, let's go ahead and do both of them while you're up there, okay?
Okay. Planning and zoning met at our last meeting, and we considered the... We considered the specific use permit for 43 Oakmont for it to be considered as a short-term rental. We reviewed all of the documents that they had been submitted. Everything was included based on our document list. So at that particular point in time, we didn't see anything that would keep us from moving this forward for recommendation for city council to consider. So we did move it forward. I think it's on your regular agenda tonight, and you'll be able to consider an approval of that. So that was our recommendation at that point. Anybody has any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Well, you answered one, because my concern was I didn't see anything in here where we had the statutory durable of attorney for the daughter. So, I thought, yeah, that's good. And the only other comment I wanted to make is I really appreciate the detail that's in the packet of information. Because I'm Rishi. I love how you give council references, so that if we have some questions about the ordinance, click it on, and we can look it up. And it's so much easier to review now, that information from planning and zoning.
Great.
I know that's you, and I know Sam, too, but...
I was gonna say, Sam's a big help for that, too.
I know, but it's a team, so I really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we'll move on down to DS 25026, which is to discuss adjustments to Chapter 4 Business Regulations, including adding Chapter 4.06 on short-term rentals. Chapter 4, when... I didn't have this in your packet for review. It's a lot of material that we just started going over in our last planning and zoning meeting. I've asked the planning and zoning members to go back through it. It's got a lot of references where the mayor has to make various approvals. We felt like that might not be the best person to use for that. So all of the planning and zoning members are gonna come back to our next meeting with our edits and adjustments. Once we start getting those edits and adjustments put together with the help of Sam, as normal, then we'll bring that back to city council for y'all's review and see if you agree or have any others that we need to include. That Article 4.06 is a brand-new one. It's not in Chapter 4. It's one that was produced with our previous city manager to try to address some guidelines for short-term rentals with the number of adults that would be in a short-term rental, the noise levels, the reviews that we would do for short-term rentals before we would come up with their approval. So we're looking at that as well to make any additional adjustments that we have all been talking about up to this point in time. Once we get those adjustments made, we'll bring it back to city council as well, see if y'all have any additional adjustments. And if so, we'll put both Chapter 4 and 4.06 together, bring it back for you, bring it back to you with a recommendation of either approval or moving it forward. Any questions on that at this point? Okay, I think that gets me for right now, Dennis.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question, just not on any particular thing, but on... We had a joint meeting with P&amp;Z, council did, and we agreed at that point that for every one of your P&amp;Z meetings, there would be a council person there. Is that working?
We've had one there in the last two meetings, so...
I came in January.
You were the one.
So, council, okay, we need to talk about that as a group, because we made a commitment.
Right.
But I think we didn't do a sign-up sheet, or we didn't make it formal.
Sure.
Are you still interested in having a...
Absolutely, because that input we really value, so that we don't get off on a tangent that y'all don't want us off on.
I enjoyed attending and listening to you.
Yeah, it's perfect for us if we can get that done, absolutely.
Any more questions?
Add on an agenda so we can...
Thank you.
Okay, Dennis, next one, I want to have Sam discuss this one. It's DS 25027.
Okay.
As it relates to ADA.
We do that right now, too. We're putting 2024 on hold just for a second. Matt's gonna do that, but he's not here. So we'll hold off on that one. So we're gonna skip down to 2527.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon. So we're going over the DS 25027, adding ADA requirements to the new and existing regulations. If you look at the document that I've provided, I have given three options of possible revisions that can be added to incorporate ADA language within the ordinance codes. The first revision option A is more detailed and more comprehensive.
Need a paper that says planning and zoning commission. That's just, that's the only... And I think I pulled...
All right, my apologies. Probably, we can... I can share the... It'll give you the whole, the city council, a chance to go over it as part of the packet. I guess maybe it wasn't...
And get the information so that at the next council meeting, we would have a better time. I mean, I'm a little slow on picking up on this stuff, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Five-minute dissertation probably isn't gonna soak into my brain.
Yeah. I can reshare the information that I shared, and then you will have an opportunity to kind of go through the details that I've added in.
Okay.
All right.
And then there was another document, because I saw that on the agenda, but we didn't have any handouts, so I wasn't sure what to do. But Linda, and I don't know if I sent this to council or not. If not, Linda, do you or can send this to council? The Department of Justice ADA Guidelines for Small Towns, it's excellent. It talks about how to, and it's from 2007, so, you know, it's been a while, but ADA's been around since 92. So, but it talks about how to get ADA compliant in a small town, and there are all the different accommodations. Some really creative ideas. Like, for instance, if this event center wasn't ADA compliant, then they suggest maybe you have your public meetings in a local church, or the auditorium, depending upon how many people are coming, you know, the auditorium of your local high school. But you don't have to make your facilities ADA compliant in all cases. And there are some things that are, if you have less than 50 employees, then it's one thing, and we do. So we could... But do you guys want to send that around to council? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I found it real helpful. And as we evaluate this for our city, I thought there was some good common sense.
I think just to maybe quickly give you an overview of the option 2 and 3, because they're shorter. And then I can maybe pass this around just for an overview before I share the actual documents for more information. So I'm just gonna guide you through the option B and option C that I've added to the packet. And option B is basically mirroring what we see in the city of Belton, and how they've incorporated ADA language within their ordinance codes. So with option B, we included in Appendix B zoning ordinance, Section 3 definitions, "Community Home." And we just add in a line that says, "A community home shall comply with all applicable sections of this ordinance and the Community Homes for Disabled Persons Location Act, BTCA, Human Resources Code, Chapter 123, and the ADA standards as they exist now or they may be amended." So just adding a line, a sentence, which just says ADA standards within this EXP item. And this is basically just kind of borrowing how it has been used in the city of Belton ordinance code. The third option is we included under Chapter 3 Building Regulations, Article 3.02 Technical and Construction Codes and Standards, Division 2 Building Planning and Construction, Section 3.02.05 to Commercial Construction. And again, the language we add is basically when we mention Building Code 2015 Edition, published by the International Code Council, and the ADA standards on file in the office of the city. So basically just adding in ADA standards within this revision. And this, again, this was just looking at the, how the city of Belton has used ADA language, and we just kind of copied that to incorporate, because this is, this just gives a general idea that, you know, we need to keep ADA standards in mind, but not going into too much detail of different sections as the city of Austin has done. But at the same time, the option 1 revisions that I have provided, they are more detailed, and they kind of mirror what the city of Austin has done. And I think that was something that I went over at the last city council meeting, but it was too detailed. So this time, I have actually added in where they could fit in within the city of Morgan's Point Resort. And they fit in exactly the different sections that are more appropriate.
Yeah, and when you look at cities, I mean, I saw in here Colleen, Waco, and you said Austin and Belton. But we're only, we're less than 5,000 people, and we only have 35 to 40 employees. So we really need to try to look at smaller towns as to what they're doing also.
Right, right.
Because we can't step up to, or maybe we don't want to, step up to Austin standards. But ADA, I mean, we have to comply with ADA, so, exactly. Absolutely, but there are accommodations that you can do. They may, they may comply this way, and we may comply that way. So I'd like to see how smaller cities comply, because I did think that handout was interesting on some options for us. And still be in compliance, yeah. And make the accommodations we need to make for our residents. I mean, that's the bottom line, yeah.
All good?
Yep.
Okay, appreciate everything, and...
All right, thank you.
Next we're gonna do, we're gonna go to Dennis, right here. He can do the curfew deal in his, too, right? Just Matt's not here.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, this is a proposed ordinance creating a section within Chapter 8 establishing a curfew for the parks that would apply to all parks within the city. And the curfew would be between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM. During that period, no person, as it states here, shall be, shall use or remain in the public park of the city for any purpose except for provided in subsection B. And that subsection B deals with an exception that's required. We ran through the city manager's office or his designee for the purpose of the justification for the request to be given an exemption. And this is something that was talked about before. I know some citizens have approached us in this general area that seem to have some issues with people coming in later at night. I know there's different opinions around the table, but this is the proposed ordinance. If you all want to accept it, if not, then we'll move on.
And my understanding is this was a joint proposal from our new Parks and Rec Committee in collaboration with our police department.
I do know that regardless of how it started, it did get vetted through Parks Committee as well, yes.
And that this is their recommendation to council.
My understanding that both sides agreed to that.
That is correct.
Thank you.
A contrary view, I still don't like the idea of just arbitrarily locking up public property in the middle of the night because you don't like it. That seems to me not to be a smart move. If, I would like to see, if there's this huge crime wave coming in through the parks every night between 11:00 and 8:00, and keeping me out, so I can't do what I want to do in the park lawfully, I would like to see where those numbers come from. But you can say, we're trying to prevent a situation where people who have less than good ideas, good motives, are taking advantage of darkness. Safety is always an excuse to take away liberty. There's a famous quote, sometimes attributed to Ben Franklin, sometimes Thomas Jefferson. "Once you give up liberty for security, you have neither." If you can point out where the criminal rates are, Dennis, we've talked about this a little bit in the past. With your experience, I would love to see that. If we're just saying that it has a potential of bad people doing bad things, so we'll lock the door, and then if they come in there, we'll arrest them, you can do that for anything. You can use that as an excuse to do anything. You could, we can lock up the road, Morgan's Point Boulevard, at midnight with guards and roadblocks and say, well, somebody might come in here and want to sell dope or steal children, or whatever the hell they want to do. You cannot use that as a legitimate excuse and still have liberty. You can do it, and you can have arbitrary rules set up that sound kind of good. But if you don't have a way to back them up, you're just taking away liberty, and you're not gaining anything. So I would like to see, rather than jump through this, let's back it up, and let's talk about it. Let's see what the statistics look like. Let's see how many people are involved. Let's see what there really is a problem. If there's not a problem, then why are we, why are we trying to solve a problem that may potentially happen? I think if you're gonna do that, we ought to get a dome, so just in case, you know, there's a meteor comes. You never know. You can use any excuse you want, but when you start taking away people's freedom just because of some arbitrary desire of enforcing some magical crime-stopping thing, that doesn't make sense from a libertarian, from a citizen's viewpoint. It may for the cops, but I don't think it helps us in here. Taking away liberty is always a problem. And this is a baby slap.
Right on time. You're up, Matt.
So my proposal is to table this. Let's do some studies. Let's find some numbers. Let's see what the options are. Rather than just lock the door and say, oop, got it done. I don't think that's a smart way to go.
Matt, is there anything that you would like to say in the discussion of the curfews in the parks?
It's, Matt, just to let you know where we left off. The highlights were spoken of. The only thing I didn't mention was the penalty group, which is classy misdemeanor, $500 maximum fine. Other than that, it's just discussion on some of the things, like statistically speaking, we're looking at what kind of examples do we have to go on, any kind of crime reported in areas, which I wouldn't know, but Mike?
Yep. So regardless of statistics, because I can tell you statistics don't matter at this point. And I don't mean to say that so very bluntly, but the question comes down to, do you want your parks, the infrastructure and the investments that you put into your parks, do you want it secure or not? It's a tool. It is not a way to punish people, to take away liberties, or anything like that. But park curfews, we're not the, we're actually probably the last to institute a park curfew. Park curfew's been around before I was even born, and we can go back probably a little bit further than that. So it's a tool for law enforcement. Here's the deal. There's, again, I spoke previously, park curfews, again, are a tool. And what we mean by that is, Mr. Kloon, you could, you concluded that, you know, as a photographer, you would like to go out to the park, take pictures, nighttime photography. I forgot what you call it. Astro photography? Gotcha. Astro photography. Would you be violating the ordinance? Yes, you would. You would be violating the ordinance, plain and simple. The issue with that is, is, or there's no issue, our job as law enforcement is to educate, all day long, is to educate, and then hold those accountable that we can't hold accountable. But our main premise is to educate. So educating people on curfews and the reason why they're in place is not to spewade people from taking astrophotography or things of that nature. It is a tool for us to ability to curb crime for the people that aren't there taking astrophotography. So would you be violating the law? Yes, but there's a letter of the law and a spirit of the law. And that's what our job is to do, is to educate on the spirit of the law and how it's intended to be applied. We can't write as legislature, legislative body, and whatnot. We can't write laws that incorporate every single what-if situation. It's impossible. But what we are asking for is the tool to be able to approach people in the park at night, and to be able to hold them accountable, things, because, you know, kids in the park at night are not, are not taking astrophotography, right? They're doing things that they're not, probably not supposed to be doing, and the only reason they're not doing it at that time is because we're there, or somebody else is there. But we can't be everywhere 24 hours a day, neither can you, neither can the citizens. So we're asking for the tool to be able to help us in securing your infrastructure, securing your investments. And that's basically what we're asking to do.
And Dennis, since you're the city manager, or whoever you appoint, if Pat came to you and said, I would like... And Dennis, since you're the city manager or whoever you appoint, um, if Pat came to you and said, I would like to get into Oakmont Park at 2:00 in the morning, um, every night of the year, because I want to look at the stars and take pictures. There is a piece in here that he can request an exception, and would you grant that exception?
Hmm. I would, I would, I would have coffee and donuts. I would.
I'll advise him to accept it with the donuts.
I got that part.
Uh, you can keep the coffee.
That's for you.
I would like to make a motion that uh we accept ordinance 20, unless there's any more discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. Okay.
So the, the taking away people's liberty, the freedom to go to a public park 24 hours a day is less important than the potential of some criminal activity?
Well, I'd say no.
Where's the numbers? What, you know, you can, again, Matt, you can say we're doing this for security, for safety, for to protect, property protection, whatever. You can use that to beat people to death with. It has, you say historically, a lot of people, a lot of parks, a lot of cities, a lot of national parks, they've law, legislated laws or passed laws that you can't get into them. Are we any better off? No. I mean, you just, you keep taking away freedoms.
Right, we're, I would say are.
Because you, you, you know, it's.
When, when you say are we better off, are you using the, as in a city or as, as people of the United States? Uh, I want to be more clear. When you say are we better off, you mean the city? Because right now, we don't have that. Um, so right now, um, there is nothing.
Doing one. You're doing one.
Doing one.
Park.
Yes, we are doing one park. Um, and it has, and it has combat crime.
Okay, then, then back to your original point. There's no statistics. Statistics are just, yep, yeah. Where are the numbers?
Well.
Can we, is it not reasonable to have a semi-reasonable discussion about it with some facts?
Yeah, so here's, here's also the deal. Also, Pat, you like numbers, right? But the absence of numbers as well in law enforcement is just the same as having numbers. Because if we have the numbers to begin with and now we had, we, we make a change and we have an absence of numbers, that is just as good as a confirmation in statistics.
But we can have that discussion before we pass this.
You could probably attest today.
Can we not have a discussion, a logical discussion about freedoms and openness?
And, and, and that's the reason why we had the discussion with Parks and Recreation Committee. And Parks and Recreation Committee took that to their neighbors, information to their neighbors and asked the, the community and asked them, what are their thoughts on it? And they said they agreed. I mean, we heard, um, and I don't remember if it was Ms. Hankins. Um, that was here the last one, uh, Ms. Hankins, you know, and I use the Hankins test. Uh, Ms. Hankins is, uh, it's not, it's not a, it's not a scientific method, but um, you know, Ms. Hankins is, 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 uh, Ms. Hankins is a very, very good ally and, and opposition to the police department. She keeps us in check, you know? I'm just like you would do, you're asking us questions to say, hey, are we, are we doing this arbitrarily to take people's liberties or freedoms away? No, of course not. We would never do that, right? But we, well, we have to do something. I mean, you know, we have to do some.
You can't solve a problem that hasn't been defined as a problem.
But we, but we have solved, we have defined park vandalism and things as a problem already. That's hence the reason why.
Show me the numbers.
Okay, okay.
That's all I'm asking for. Let's have a logical discussion. We don't have to jump through hoops and go crazy. We don't have to make it within, you know, you presented it last time and now you want to vote on it and we haven't had a chance to have a, any kind of a discussion about it.
And, and, and the reason for that was we asked that night for guidance, uh, for guidance from the council to say, hey, do you like this track? What else would you like to see in this, uh, in this? Um, and I, I believe there was a discussion about maybe different hours for different parks, which for a management standpoint is it's, it's for law enforcement, if I'm gonna have to go lock up a park like for Oakmont, because it's the only one that we have, we're changing hours for different things. It becomes hard to manage. Um, and um, what's the reasoning behind, why are we doing this for one, not for the other? Because eventually, uh, my understanding is, um, through the strategic planning session, um, and then with the helps of Parker Recreation and E, and EDC, our plans are to develop parks um and develop these parks across the entire city. That's my understanding. Is that, a- am I wrong? I mean, you're gonna invest money in just about every single park across the city and I believe if the taxpayers, if you're gonna invest that money um from the taxpayers, I believe they would want their money secured. I mean, let them speak for themselves.
I'm not saying it's an, it, you know, it's, it's either A or B. But I would like to have some kind of a logical discussion that we're, we're not just making up boogeymen to, to give you guys the, the, give the, the people, to deny them going to the parks when they want to. If you guys want to get off work.
I'll trigger that to move on. We've got a lot to cover yet. We, you know, still have the executive session, so we've got to move on. We're not voting on it right now anyway.
No, no, but can we have the agreement to have a discussion about this?
That's what y'all want to do. Y'all decided, because we're not voting on it right now anyway.
Matt, were you around, just give me one more minute. Um, before COVID and it was before, before we put the gate on Oakmont Park. And I vaguely remember, you know, that we had some issues with Oakmont Park and, which is why the reason we put the gate up.
So.
Around then or?
So Oakmont, so Oakmont Park um has, since I have been uh employed with the city since 2011. Uh, since 2011, Oakmont Park has had a gate on the entrance of the park um forever. Uh, and I don't know how long previously before that. Um, and so we would usually, and historically, we would lock that park for uh, because it's so flat um and accessible, um, people like to go out mudding there. Um, and so we had a lot of issues with tearing up the park with the mudding. Uh, we've also had numerous complaints from the people in uh Oakmont Circle, um, the houses that back up to the park, um, having to view um and see indecent and sexual behavior and acts that are illegal, um, taking place in the park. Um, and then of course, uh, that park right there specifically, you know, they, uh, it gets a lot of people that, and, and I'd say the same for Anse, uh, but because of its location, it's a lot of people that walk their dogs and their families walk through there, of course. Uh, you know, not much infrastructure at Oakmont Park, but um, I mean, it is a very heavily family visited park. And so, um, those things we shouldn't be having, you know, and then they were occurring, of, of course, at different, various hours of the day, daylight hours, and then of course naturally at nighttime, undercover darkness. So that's the reason why, um, it came to council as well, uh, because we were having so many issues. That's why I then ended up having a license plate camera added to it um at one point. And then we locked the gates with the times, uh, because we, I mean, parks are, parks are, are issues. They're not, you know, they're not problem children, but they do have issues.
But it doesn't.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you bet. We'll address this in a regular, regular uh agenda two here in a few minutes. If y'all want to postpone it, you can at that time. Dennis?
Yes, Mayor. Mayor City Council, uh, last regular session we brought before you to draft in our local agreements relating to the change or should say the charge, the counties and cities are required under chapter 242 of the Texas Local Government Code. It's this, these documents here that we've brought and we brought before you again tonight is for the county and the city to come to an agreement relating who will approve the Platts in the ETJ, but also who will maintain that maintenance, uh, making it basically one uh, one motion. When you take one, you take the other with it. It's not when you approve it, you accept the maintenance requirements for that. County doesn't care. They said they can continue to do it or we could, or the, the jurisdiction that has that ETJ could approve the plat and thereby accepting the maintenance responsibilities. That came about, um, for clarity, I guess, the county went ahead and challenged it in court. And the court order basically said that accepting the maintenance of the streets in a subdivision is part of the plating process. Now, how that plays out beyond this court order, I don't know. I don't know if it was appealed, probably not, but I don't know that for a fact. I'm just thinking that uh sooner or later, it's gonna be, come to a point, well, you have an investment in that infrastructure. We should have some ownership in it and if it's not technically annexed, how does that play in with the public use of money from the city standpoint? I don't think that all of it's been answered with this uh, with this order. Nevertheless, the county is rightfully so, asking for chapter 242 agreements to be uh implemented and basically letting either them continue or let them do it and/or the city of Morgan's Point Resort to do the uh plating approval process that does accept the maintenance. So that's really where we're at. It's one of two agreements. If you all want to let the county approve the Platts and the maintenance, they're fine with that. If you want to accept the uh plating, approve it, knowing full well that we accept the maintenance, that's okay. They're just asking to solidify the agreements that currently exist uh in such a manner.
Stephen, last time you gave us a handout. You want to speak to it?
Well, and, and I don't know how, how accurate all this is, um, but and I, and actually I apologize, because actually I was actually looking at something in a second, so my brain was not 100% on point where we're at. Um, you know, I don't want us to give up our rights, you know, and I've had a conversation, Neil and I had a conversation about it because there is a financial burden that, that gets created by it to us with us keeping it. You know, we've had a month to think about this. There's some pros and there's some cons. I think where I'm at, I mean, we don't need any more financial burdens. That's really hard. Like, we have so many burdens financially on us right now. Um, and as we grow and with water and all these different things, but at the same time, I'm like, man, the potential to keep that is pretty important, I think, because it could eventually generate tax revenue. But right now, it's like, it's that if and only thing, like, what is the best thing to do? Honestly, you guys, I, I don't know the right answer. Like, I mean, I think that's why there's five of us on the council, because I truly don't know what is best for our city on this one.
And you had some pros and cons, which I thought were good. You were very objective.
Well, I, I think so for pros, all right, if we, if Bell County becomes a primary authority, I'll, I'll just go through these really quick. Less administrative burden for Morgan's Point, that's plus, right? Um, it's cost savings for us, that's plus. Faster approvals, so developers can actually probably work through getting their projects on, in process quicker, because they're not having to jump through the city as much. Um, county maintenance, you know, differs that. Again, I mean, it's all about, sadly, it's all about money, really. You know, I mean, that's how the world goes around. And then cons, and we lose control, guys. And like, that, as small as our city is, that is my concern, honestly, is because we, we do have such a small footprint and the more we give up, the less we have, the less we have. And eventually, um, you know, I'm talking 20 years down the road, we could be gone. Like, Morgan's Point as a whole could be gone, and so I think the more that we can hold as a stakeholder, the more leverage it gives us. But again, I, I don't know the right answer here. I, this is way like, a very complicated issue, honestly. The more, when I, initially, when I read it last year or last month, I, you know, started stomping my feet and I'm like, I'm like, no way we're giving up control. And now I like, I look at both sides of it and, I mean, it's pretty concerning, really.
The other one I remember, I think, was that you said that if we give up our, our oversight um in this area and then we eventually annex it, that we will have some properties in the annexation area that don't comply with our ordinances. Because maybe the county didn't have those same ordinances, so there's going to be a cost to comply. And, you know, we, that's the other thing I thought about in there. Um, yeah.
Just hesitate here.
I would just say, and I'm not a resident expert, thanks. I will say that, um.
Pass the mic.
Okay. At least I didn't drop it. Okay. Uh, the way the laws are now, annexations, there are some exceptions, but basically, there's three ways to do it and all of them deal with consent to annex. In other words, we just don't go out and grab land if we don't own it. There's certain things that's gonna kick in. So I would just say that if you're, if, if you're waiting to annex, as in to go out and say, we're gonna go and go after this particular subdivision, for example, this outside, without certain conditions met in a consensual manner from that area, you're not gonna get it anyway. Because you don't, like I said, there's a few exceptions, but three of the major ones are, they have to consent to it. It could go to votes. I mean, there's different ways this process can work out. So if you're hanging on to it for that purpose, uh, I'm not sure if that's uh something you want to consider, given the law it is today. Now, that could change tomorrow. It changed years ago where a tier one city, tier one and a tier two could go at it different ways. Well, now in 2019, the state took that away from you. Now we're all treated pretty much the same with the same provisions. There's no more 10 more tier one, tier one, tier two cities. So that's the kind of things you might want to consider as a governing body.
Another thing that you, you should consider is, you know, if you're talking about being responsible for, you know, a zone.
Get it closer, put your mouth up.
Act like you like it.
Uh, if you're talking about being responsible for, you know, overseeing and approving the construction of subdivision, you've got to have the people on staff and you've got to have the engineering expertise, be able to do that, to be sure that the drainage gets right, that, you know, everything that, you know, everything is done uh so that you don't pick up additional liability, you know, trying to do, do something that you're not staffed to be able to do.
And the dovetail in on what Neil's saying, there is a fiscal impact to it. Uh, maintenance upkeep, uh, not to mention, we don't have an engineer, we'll, we'll have to do basically long call or outsource that engine, general engineering requirements and stuff. So there will be a fiscal impact uh at both ends, at the earlier stage and towards maintaining it from that point forward. Again, I'm not saying one way or another. I'm just letting you know, I think that's the same thing, Neil, we're just letting you know some of the other things that's involved.
With, with no, okay, and with no guarantee that we could someday annex that in, unless they ask us to, at the, at the current law. So if we.
Picking up the, the maintenance of roads and have no income.
So if we sign this and say the county should take it and we're not gonna take it, is that permanent forever? Or can that come back again at some point if they just ask us to annex? Can we then say we'll take over the maintenance? Do you know?
They could always come forward like they do now and, and ask for a, a amendment to the ILA. But um, as far as, again, going back to annexation, it's not gonna happen unless they want to come this way anyway. Which, which that time, if you did accept a voluntary annexation, it would be uh an offset in tax revenue and things of this nature. But um, to answer your question, could it be modified? Would be, but that doesn't mean they have to change it. I mean, Neil could give you more on the legal side. I just, I know if I were a city and I didn't want it, I would advise against it.
So, and again, I, this is a very complex issue. And I, I'm not a lawyer. I've not read all of, all the stuff. Is there somewhere in that that it would give? I don't even know how to articulate it without sounding, sounding weird, but so giving up that, that right though, does that remove, I mean, it, it removes all of and we have absolutely no control. We have lost everything. We're giving it up completely and like, the reality is this, and I'm gonna make up hypothetical places, but let's say that Canyon Circle where I live was, you know, in that ETJ. And then, or in the county, we gave that right to county. Am I gonna be? Would it be easier for me or give me less? I almost feel like we need to have this conversation in a closed session because of, because of uh some of the topics that we talked about recently. You guys know what I'm talking about?
Yes.
I, I, I think, I'd like to add that to the agenda actually.
In the executive session?
Yep.
I asked for it to be in the executive session.
I, I think that.
It got in. Okay.
Okay.
Annexations are in there.
Okay. That makes sense to me, because I agree.
Yeah, I know, and because one of the things, my first thought too, was I've seen, we look back and say, why did the city council way back when get rid of that? We should have kept that, you know, or we should, and so I, I, I'm trying to think, you know, not just the cost today, but forward thinking as what's gonna be the long-term effect of our decision that we make. And I think that, that will help.
And, and I think I look at the example of the deal that the Temple City Council made in like 1960s or 70s with water rights. Man, they were brilliant. They, they, they were so forward-thinking. And so I just want to make sure that we're not, not being forward-thinking, I think.
And I will add that the county obviously would like to have it within 60 days, but that's no requirement. It's, it's a big decision to make, so if it went a little bit longer, I don't think it's relevant.
Jeez, Jimbo, you've been, you've been quiet tonight. Um, yeah, here, here's just kind of thinking through. This is one of the things that I missed last month when I uh. Geez, Jimbo, you've been, you've been quiet tonight. Um, yeah, here, here's just kind of thinking through, this is one of the things that I missed last month when I, uh, when I was out driving, firing, just, um, a thought I had is, if we accept this, not just the fiscal issue, um, are we seriously and honestly, if we look in a mirror, are we in a position to support this? Um, roads came up last night, so here's what I'm thinking. If we support something like this and somebody has a plat and they build a house with a nice, pretty road and all this nice stuff with the expectation that Morgan's Point Resort is going to support it, and we do a less than good job at it, are they ever really going to want to annex in with us, or did we just waste our time? Um, because I tell you, if it's my piece of land and, and I'm looking at it, and I'm not getting the quality of support that I want from a city, I'm not going to annex in. So we've lost it anyway. So, you know, we're, we're, a lot about cost benefit, and I appreciate that, but I, I absolutely, I hate to give up anything. Um, greedy, greedy, greedy. I've got Lego from nineteen seventies, but, um, but it's, it's one of those things where can, can we, do we think we can actually support it, um, fiscally? So, I don't know. Just food for thought.
It's an important thing. It's not just a flip it, flip a coin, yes, no. I think it's too big a deal just to, okay, why not? And, and the long-term, I mean, it's not like a two-year window that we're going to screw up or, or do really well on, and we're talking on a major timeframe.
Right, and, and what we could do, since we do have annexation in the executive session, if you all wanted to, just suggestion, uh, we'll set a side table and there'll be, I need to have another meeting anyway, near term, for operational needs of the city. So we'll be bringing it back possibly sooner, but no later than the next regular session, and I'll let the county know as well. If that's what you all want to do, that gives you time to talk tonight.
Yeah.
Have a discussion, see what you want to do, and then.
That's a smart.
Come back. Okay.
I, I would like to do that, because I, I have a giant green question mark floating around right now with what you're referencing. I'm like, I don't have a clue what you're talking about. Um, I would like to discuss that offline or in an executive session.
I'm sure we could need to bring this to, to an end here, because we've got a meeting coming up in six minutes, so gives a chance for people to sign in, so, uh, making a motion down here, a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn or do we put it?
A recess, okay, the word, yeah. They beg at six o'clock.
Okay, and we're going to move the special session to the regular meeting.
We're, we're going to talk about that here in a minute. I'm think, I've got a different, a different idea.
Okay.